Okay, thank you, Dr. Galligan. That makes sense now.
Okay.
I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Governing Board's study session. The time is 6:23, so only 23 minutes behind schedule, but who's counting? Let the record show, all board members are present. And I need a motion to adopt the agenda. So moved. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So the agenda has been adopted. We are looking at the study session on two parts. Part A is the Classroom Site Fund from school year 2017-18. Part B is the Classroom Site Fund, school year 2018-19. Now with the study session, members of the public may speak and address the board. So what I would ask you to do is raise your hand. Obviously, I don't have a seating chart, so I don't know everybody's names. And calling on the person in red probably isn't going to go work too well either. But I'll do my best to get people up in a timely manner, in the best teacher way possible. Okay? So shall we start with Mr. Michelino?
Of course.
If you have some information to share with the board.
President Frank, members of the board. So this is essentially the same presentation that we provided during the discussion of this item back on April 24th. But I think you have a printed copy of it, and we also have it to display for purposes of the -- for the audience to be able to see as well. But it does have some Jim font in it, so just a forewarning in advance. The -- just again, an overview of the Classroom Site Fund and the fact that it was approved and now has been extended with the legislation that took place this year. But there are three components of it. What we call the base salary increase, the performance pay increase, and then what we refer to as the menu money. And the reason we call it the menu money is because there are statutorily some identified areas that you're allowed to spend that portion of the Classroom Site Fund on. And -- but it is not prescriptive. It doesn't tell you that you have to spend the money in those categories. It's just allowable. And then the amount is established by the Joint Legislative Budget Committee, or JLBC, each year. Also, there have been some court rulings regarding who qualifies for the Classroom Site Fund. And so suffice it that to say, I mean, the kind of the rule of thumb is you have to have a teaching certificate issued by ADE, and your position has to require that you have that teaching certificate in order to be eligible for a Classroom Site Fund distribution or allocation to be assigned to you. All right, so starting with fiscal year 18, that's this current school year. And this is the actual approved plan that the board approved back in June of 2017. And I think, just kind of cutting to the chase, the menu money is on the right-hand side of this column, and you can see that there's an allocation there that's been assigned to items other than the teacher salary. That includes AIMS intervention, it's still listed as AIMS intervention in the statute, but consider that to be statewide assessments, and teacher development. And that's roughly $2.1 million that was in the approved plan for this year. This is just a little bit more detail of that information, and just a little bit larger for illustrative purposes.
I have a question. I notice you have a carryforward of $825,000. Yeah, and maybe it's here. Is there an estimated carryforward from this year, 17-18?
Yeah, so that $825,000 was an estimate from last year. The actual amount is just under $1 million. So it grew to larger than $825,000. And so that has to be amended into the Classroom Site Fund. And I think it's worth noting that all of the monies that are contained within those three, we call them buckets, have to remain within those buckets. So money from '13 doesn't jump into '12 and vice versa. And we have to account for those individually. So that amount does change from the actual, since the board, since this was approved before we've completed the fiscal year.
So can I stop you there? Because I'm -- so.
Okay, so this is what I was confused about. When I took the site fund narrative that you gave us, I took the amount because what I was trying to figure out was what districts received more 301 money than us and what districts received less 301. So I used Fund 11. And the reason I used Fund 11 was because they're required to have 20% of that go to salary and salary-related expenses. And I was thinking the amount reflected in Fund 12 might be different on the performance pay if some districts were rolling over their performance pay. And then on the Fund 13, obviously, that's probably why this room's packed, different people do different things with Fund 13. So I was saying if Deer Valley paid out of Fund 11, based on the amount we paid, I was trying to figure out what 100% of the money we received and to compare that to the districts. So I sent that to you, and I was saying if $2,153,199 was 20% of the money, then 100%, and I sent you an email on that, and I was saying, based on that figure, then Deer Valley would have received $10,765,995,000. Then I -- then the email you sent me said we received $14 million. So then where'd the other $4 million come from since we got this report? I don't know where that $4 million is.
President Frank, Ms. Tweedy, the -- so I provided the current year information. So the $14 million is this year's Classroom Site Fund. The narrative is something that actually gets completed by each district, so I was doing a comparison within each district. That is from the prior year, from 2016-17. So I don't have the individual plans from the other comparable districts to be able to create the comparative analysis that I sent in an update for the current year. What I reported to you, there's sort of two different amounts. And actually, in the year that you're referring to, we actually, the Classroom Site Fund total was over $12 million in 16-17.
Okay, then if it was over $12 million, then we wouldn't have used 20% on Fund 11 like we're supposed to, right?
That's the way, the calculation, they determine the total amount, and then 20% goes into that fund. And that, the amount that's on the narrative is what we actually expended for that year.
Well, do we have to do 20%?
You, it remains within the base salary amount, and if there's any carryforward, it gets applied to the base salary in a future year. So there are sometimes some residual, maybe unfilled contracts or things of that nature. But for the most part, we zero out Fund 11 every year.
So if that showed $10 million and there was $12 million, where's the other $2 million? That went into this year.
The, I'd be more than happy to provide the Classroom Site Fund report that actually gets produced by ADE that shows you what the total amount, if that's what your question is.
Well, I'm just trying to figure this out. Okay, so then the other question I have, when I was signing vouchers, it had 301 money in Fund 14. Did we put some money in a Fund 14?
We do. And so in order to distinguish between the district initiatives that are the things like AIMS intervention and teacher development, we created a Fund 14 to separate those amounts so that Fund 13 is specifically for the amount that goes to teachers. Correct.
Could we have a breakdown of Fund 14 for last year?
When you say last year, which year are you referring to? 16, 2016-17? I just want to be clear.
17-18.
17-18 is this year.
You're saying this is a done deal, right?
That's 2016-17.
Okay, so 17-18.
17-18 is not complete, it's the current year.
That's the current year. So could we have a breakdown of what was spent in Fund 14, what you've moved? So you can move stuff from Fund 13 to 14, is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
But, and so anything in Fund 14 came from Fund 13?
Correct.
So can you send us a breakdown of Fund 13 and Fund 14?
It's in the presentation.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you.
I just want to clarify, just for Darcy, because if I understand correctly, it is moved from 14 to, from 13 to 14, just for administrative, operational, but all funds are reported in 13, from what I understand. In other words, they don't, what you're seeing in Fund 13 is Fund 13. For accounting purposes, it's just put into, but in reporting, it's all rolled into 13, if I'm remembering correctly. Is that, is that right?
That is correct.
So you're not going to see a Fund 14 here, but the total balance of Fund 14 is in Fund 13. There is no Fund 14, it doesn't exist.
It does on the vouchers.
Okay, but it is Fund 13. It's like, it's like when you have a 20, a 5, and a dollar in your wallet, and you pay with a, you say, "I'm going to break this 20 because I need a 5 in this bunch and a 5 in this bunch." It still is the same thing. So he doesn't, it's not, he doesn't take the money away from Fund 13 and then own it somewhere else. He just separates them in operations so that...
I just want to see what's in Fund 14.
I know, I'm just clarifying because you're not, you're not, you're going to see Fund 13, and Fund 14 is included in.
But I think there'll be details that I don't see when it's in.
And to that point, the breakdown here of the $1.3 million of state assessment intervention and $800,000 of teacher development, that is Fund 14. So $2.1 million was, is this year's current approved Fund 14 budget.
Okay, I think Maria Leva had a public comment question.
Question, I guess, to the board president. Anything technology-related, there's a lot of technology, close to half a million dollars is spent on School City, and a little over $40,000 is spent on Canvas. Could that potentially be moved into the bond or paid out of the bond since the bond was passed for the pro-technology component?
That's a great question, and I also had the same question, I think Ms. Tweedy did as well.
Thank you.
President Frank, both of those specific references were software, and software licenses specifically per our bond council cannot be funded from the bond. We can fund technology purchases, equipment, from bond proceeds, though. So we buy devices with bond dollars, but not software.
So not site licenses and things of that nature?
That is correct.
Okay. Are there further questions from board members or ready to proceed, continue?
Okay, so just continuing on with the presentation, this is just to clarify how much money is actually currently being assigned to teacher salaries. So 100% of the base salary is in teacher salary, 100% of performance pay is in the teacher salaries. There are two pots of money. Within the menu money, there's 34.7% that's for direct teaching salary increases, and then there's the famous 41.8%, which I believe has been in existence since the inception of the development of the menu money, or the Classroom Site Fund menu money plan. But combined, that makes 90.6% of the current allocation is already going to teachers. But there is a portion that you can see there that actually, or the balance, the 9.4% is not currently going to teachers directly.
Okay, so when you say 90.6, you're talking about if you combined all three buckets?
That's correct.
Okay. If you just look at Fund 13, then that's where the, there's the menu money goes to teacher salaries, or 14, 34.7%. So just to be clear, that menu money is added to their base pay? Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay.
As is the base salary amount. The performance pay is not added to their base salary.
Right, no, I understand that. So then if we were to increase the allocation from Fund 13, then that would increase teachers' base pay.
That is correct.
And kind of where I'm going with this is, you know, for people who are near retirement, the higher your base pay, the more you receive in retirement benefits.
That is correct.
For people who are just starting out, there's that compounding effect. So by not giving teachers, not putting more into the base pay, there's an immediate financial impact to the paycheck you see, you know, biweekly. But there's a compounding effect that follows them throughout their careers and into retirement.
That is correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Okay, so this next slide is the actual, I think what Ms. Tweedy was asking about for kind of a recap of Fund 13/14 combined. So again, the adopted allocation is $5.6 million, that's the 40% of the total. With the carryforward of $8.25, that's going to be revised to $5.9 million in allocation. The million dollars that I spoke of in carryforward makes that $6.9 million. And the teacher salary amount has already been added to their base salary, so it's already been committed, that's $4.4. So the new revised district initiative budget, our Fund 14, would be $2.5. Remember, I spoke previously, it was $2.1 million in what was approved in the plan, the board approved back in June. We have, actually through April 20th, we had $1.4 million worth of expenditures and encumbrances. That has grown a slight amount since then, although we have frozen all Fund 14 expenditures otherwise at this point in time until a board makes, until the board makes a decision. But there are some things that aren't encumbered in that $1.4 million. For example, reimbursement of travel is not always encumbered. Our, any P-card purchases would not be encumbered. Any extra duty pay, there's not an encumbrance for that. We don't write a purchase order for some of those things. Any of the summer work that may be planned. So I would caution of trying to use, or just using simply the $1.4. It's going to, I know it will be slightly more than that, it already is as of this date because this was from the previous presentation. But if it was $1.4 million, that would leave $1.1 million that is not committed. So just as a discussion piece from last time, I suggested if we increased the current year funding for teachers to $250 more than was currently assigned to them, that would take $580,000 of the $1.1 million, leaving $529,000, again roughly, in what would be left for district initiatives. So essentially, about half of the carryforward amount.
Could you maybe clarify for me, and I don't mean to hog all the questions, I'm not seeing other hands, so what district initiatives would be paid out of the $529,000?
And President Frank, I don't have like a detailed list that I can provide for you, it'd be more in generalities.
Could you, just some examples perhaps?
Yeah, so those would be ongoing professional developments that were either planned, that have not been realized, or that, you know, so they're already scheduled, which could include bringing in some individuals to perform that professional development. But this would require this to be scaled back quite a bit from the original plan.
Mrs. Ordway?
I don't know if Dr. Galligan could answer this maybe better than Jim. The professional development that he was just referring to, is that for this school year? So what we did not have, or what we excused due to the work stoppage, and that is going to be embedded in the days that are going to come, to, is that included in that, or extra?
President Frank, Ms. Ordway, the work that would be suspended would be the work that was planned either for professional development with speakers, for all teachers that have specific content areas, as well as our curricular and assessment work, and then work that teachers have been doing within Canvas for new adoptions and providing those, creating and providing those resources for teachers. That's all work that occurs generally in June, and teachers are paid for that. We've frozen everything, so all of the work that we had tentatively planned for June is completely on hold now, and that includes professional development, curriculum, assessment, and all of those types of projects.
Yeah, and that's good to know because someone would have asked that question. But what I'm referring to is the professional development that was going to take place that hasn't taken place prior to the June that.
President Frank, Ms. Ordway, there were professional developments that were scheduled for May, and what we will do is look to see if those can be available for the particular teachers that would have been involved in them during any of the five days that are extended for our certified employees.
Okay, for now, that's it.
Okay. Okay, then we do have a community member, but go ahead, Mrs. Fisher. You might have to speak into it a little more.
Okay, just because I want to clarify what Jim just told us. Part of that $5.29, if I'm not mistaken, is going to cover the things that you just listed, correct? The P-card expenditures, the extra duty, the summer work, things like that?
That is correct.
Okay, because it's kind of like when you use your credit, we've already used our credit card. If I'm, tell me if I'm wrong, we've already used our credit card for teachers or for whatever in the P-cards. We're going to get a bill. So if we spend that money and that bill comes in, we don't have the money to pay it. Is that correct?
We wouldn't have it, the money in this fund to pay it, correct?
Okay, and we may or may not in another fund. So these are, so some of these are already spent, we just don't know about them yet? Or, because we don't get, you get the credit card statements monthly, and it generally takes about a month and a half to go through the process.
That is correct. So there is a, what we call a tail on the transaction, right?
Okay, and then on these extra duty days and the travel, basically, we have teachers or certified staff that have already traveled, have already gone on some of these things, and they're expecting to get reimbursed.
That is correct.
Is that correct? Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because these aren't things that we're planning to do, these are, they're already done, we have to now pay them, pay the bills. I just wanted to make sure I was correct.
That is correct.
And thank you for bringing that up, Mrs. Fisher. My question is, is there another fund that could be paid from, those things that have already been accomplished, that, like the credit card analogy, we will have to pay? If we didn't pay it from Fund 13?
President Frank, my standard line is, so it's a $200 million budget? So yes, we probably have another fund that we can draw from, but it would not be part of the plan for, that was, that we had for those funds. So we would have to forego something to be able to afford it. Correct.
Okay, we do have a community member wishing to speak. If you please state your name.
Hi, my name's, sorry, hi, my name's Alex Porter. President Frank, members of the board, I'm sorry to take us back. I just had a question on the last slide of PowerPoint, I had trouble reading it. And it looked like the two blue sections had said the same thing. I was just wondering the difference between those two blue parts of that third pie chart.
And that is a good question. I think they might have the similar titles to them because of the way I've labeled them. The darker blue, remember, I'm color challenged, so the darker blue is the infamous 41.8%. So initially, when the first Classroom Site Fund plan was approved, we only provided 41.8% of the menu money for teacher salaries. Over time, we added, on a number of occasions, we've added, we've increased that amount by a flat dollar amount. It's now, if you slide back one slide, I'm sorry, it's right there, just under $2 million at $1,966. That's a flat dollar amount. So the 41.8 changes when the allocation changes, the $1.9 million is a flat dollar amount that gets drawn from that. So that's the difference between those two amounts. So you can see the 41.8 at the top and the 34.7. Two of the most notable uses of that $1.9 million is, I believe it was close to $1.5 million near fiscal year 2007, we made an increase to the starting salary and had to deal with compression because we brought the starting, we increased the starting salary to be more competitive, and needed to make adjustments to salaries for those people that were continuing employees. That was the lion's share of that 1.9 at $1.5 million. And then we've made additional increases in hard-to-fill addenda over time that are funded from that 1.9. And hard-to-fill addenda are not increased over time, they are a flat dollar amount, so they can come out of a flat dollar allocation from here.
Okay, I think that helps a lot. I was just trying to see the difference between the teacher base salary and the additional teacher salary increase, if it was the same or something different. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. O'Brien, I think, has been waiting. Did you have a question? Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't leaving someone out. So Ms. Tweedy, you had a question, and then we'll go to our next community member.
So back to the point, you're saying we do have the money to pay these bills out of another account other than Fund 13, and so, because I voted against it, so it should be no surprise that I would want these things paid out of a different account. And I guess what I'm really finding upsetting here, I'm going back, and our average teacher salary is basically 1,800 below our peers, and our peers don't receive desegregation funding or anything else, but they found a way to pay their average teacher 1,800 more. So I would say this is unacceptable. We need to pay this out of another account, and this money needs to go to the teachers. I mean, I didn't vote for it to begin with, so that just needs to happen.
And just, President Frank, Ms. Tweedy, just for clarification, a couple of our comparable districts do receive de-seg money. Scottsdale does, and they do. And when you talk about peer districts, which is the peer district that the Auditor General uses, then you also have Phoenix Union that ends up being in our peer group because of their size. But we don't use them as a comparable district because...
Are they included on here?
I'd have to go back, I don't know what you're looking at there, but...
It's Auditor General's report. Okay, all right, so we have a community member wishing to speak. Please state your name.
It's Heidi Deeny. The part that I'm concerned about, again, is that 1.966 million of the, that you're saying adds to the 41.8% that's going to teachers. And you're saying that that was used, the big base, you said just now 1.5 million in 2007 to increase the starting salary. Okay, I get that we have to be competitive with other districts, but we're devaluing the veteran teachers. And what happened at that time is it raised the base, and we had teachers that weren't making as much as new hires that had been in the district for a while. So you tried to straighten that all out, put more money into it. But you're taking from a fund that was intended to go to all teachers, not just new teachers, not just to straighten out, not just hard-to-fill positions. All those funds, and I get that we have to use that, all those should come from other M&amp;O money that you have at the district. It shouldn't be coming out of the 301 money that the taxpayers voted for to go to the teachers. The other districts, Paradise Valley, $6,307 to the teachers, Peoria, $6,330... Peoria, $6,332 to the teachers. You just said something different with Scottsdale, wherever they're getting their money, $6,642 to the teachers. I'm a veteran teacher. I've worked here for 26 years. I've, I, like a lot of teachers, I have different endorsements. I'm a reading specialist. I have an ESL endorsement. I've served on committees, leadership teams, CIT for almost all the years that I've been here. So, and I've been to many, many district meetings and trainings and everything, and I believe in staff development. But that's not what the voters thought the money was going to be used for. We need to get back to being competitive and valuing our veteran teachers, valuing our teachers, being competitive with other districts, not just with our base salary, but with all our salaries. And we can do this now. We don't, we don't need to hold off for a couple of years. Like you said, there's other funds. Well, you know, look at travel expenses that haven't been used. Cut that out. Take it from that fund, whatever. But it shouldn't be coming from a fund that was approved to go to teachers and that other districts surrounding us are using for teachers. We're losing teachers that way. Thank you.
I didn't ask this in advance, you may not have this number, and I don't know if Mrs. Moffett stayed, but what is the cost for bringing on new employees? Isn't a couple of thousand, I mean, you have to do the onboarding and the training and, I mean, there's... No, I guess where I'm going with this is, if we're not competitive with keeping, yeah, if we're not competitive with keeping our veteran teachers, and they leave, then they have to be replaced by somebody. So they're going to be replaced by somebody new. There's an expense to that. So, if we have money in Fund 13 that provides us the opportunity to be more competitive with our veteran teachers, and they might want to stay rather than go to another district, there's an indirect savings to that. Because, you know, I was a teacher in the district for 10 years, and I did, took advantage of all the great professional development the district had to offer, but the county gets the advantage of that now, because that's who I work for now. So, just some things to think about. Is that indirect cost to losing our veteran teachers? And if we have the opportunity here with Fund 13 to become more competitive to keep them, there are some, in my opinion, financial advantages to that.
And President Frank, I don't have that exact number to be able to vote.
And I don't expect that you would, so...
Yeah, but I think your point is well-taken. There is an expense, obviously, for bringing on employees, and we do lose talented employees when we don't, when we're not able to retain them. So, I think that was your point.
That was my point, so, and I didn't expect you to have the number magic, you know, just appear. I just wanted to make that point and have my fellow board members consider that as well when looking at this allocation.
Ms. Frank?
Go ahead.
If I could ask for clarification from my fellow board members in trying to understand maybe where we're going with this, is that I hear, I think we'd all like to see if this additional funds, the additional $529,000 at the bottom of the page that we're on, Mr. McGlorino was indeed allocated to cover teacher pay and the benefits associated with that. Are you looking to see the list of things that would maybe otherwise not be available anymore to, or that we would not, we wouldn't purchase in this school year? Is that what you're asking? There's, Mrs. Tweedy, Ms. Frank?
I just think the money's available other places, so we should pay it out of there and pay the teachers with this money. I think it's a sore spot with the taxpayers.
So, am I...
It's a sore spot with me. I'm a taxpayer.
Is that, so, so am I correct in understanding what you're looking for? Is that you'd like to know if we were to spend all the rest of the money for this year to pay teachers and teacher salary, or to pay it out in the form of money and benefits, because we have to pay benefits on that money? Are you looking to see a list of either where it would come from or what else would be foregone?
Yeah, we would need to know that.
Okay, so, well, and I guess I ask that because if that's what you were looking for, we don't have that this meeting, so we would need to maybe get it in before the next meeting when we are looking to have a vote on it. Is that correct?
Correct. It's currently on the agenda for a vote on May 15th. So we would need that information prior to, oh, gosh, it's only a week away, the next, the next board meeting.
Mrs. Frank? Jim or Gail or both, with the money that you have down for district initiatives, that is what we passed for '17, '18 money, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, I know that we don't have the exact amounts of what might still be out there due to whatever the circumstances are, we don't have that. But, so with saying that, where would we then take it out of the M&amp;O budget that we, did we, do we have a cushion of that amount for this year? Speaking only of this year, not of our, of the next?
President Frank, Ms. Ordway, I believe that it would be a twofold approach. One would be just not doing some of the things that were originally planned with the money, and then for those things that actually we have obligations to, finding some other revenue, some other fund to pay for them.
Okay, so, and maybe this is, I'm just not getting it, but if that was passed for 2017, 2018, we have May and June for 2017, 2018. That money that you have down there for district initiatives, are they all to have taken place by June 30th of this year?
President Frank, Ms. Ordway, that was the plan, but again, as you can see from the carryforward that we had coming into this year, not always is the plan realized, right? As we talked about previously, we might have a professional development plan for 100 people and only 20 show up, you know, as a scenario that we offered previously.
Right, so, I guess what I'm getting at is that perhaps that amount that you have down for the initiatives may be lesser as opposed to being greater when you find out what the specific detail and dollar amounts. But twofold on that, is since it is for the 2017, 2018, we have a budget that is M&amp;O budget also, whatever we would have in there if we were to take that whole amount away, where are we building that, that amount? Do we have that amount built into the 17, 18 to take out of M&amp;O that's not already encumbered or spent?
That is not currently in the plan for 2015, 18 M&amp;O budget. And so, I would, I would go so far to suggest that the vast majority of those $529,000 would, would, would go away. I mean, the professional development just would not happen in 17, 18.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we were all on the same page, that with what already is in the M&amp;O for 17, 18, taking that kind of a chunk, even if it was the, say it's the amount that's there, then we might have that kind of a hole and have to take it from someplace we don't have. I just want to make sure we're not going further in the hole with that one stuff.
Okay, Kristy Cooper?
I'm Kristy Cooper, and I'm trying to figure all this out, because 17 years ago, when the 301 was voted in, we were very excited as teachers that people were realizing that we were underpaid. And that money was supposed to be paid extra to us on top of what we were already made. But it seemed as, as soon as the 301 went into effect, we were then having our raises that we were supposed to be getting onto our base supplanted by the 301. So, we were getting increases, but they were basically just the 301 increases, and we felt our district was taking care of us. And all of a sudden, other people were like, well, wait a minute, teachers are getting this extra money, we want this extra money too. Well, we deserve a bonus too. So all of a sudden, not just teachers were getting the 301, somewhere, somehow, there was money to pay other people the bonuses that we were having to jump through hoops that we were supposed to already be getting that added to our salary. But in Deer Valley, instead of just giving it to your teachers, you had to do 40 hours a week, 20 hours of professional development, and 20 hours of extra responsibility. And we had to do a goal, and we had to prove our goal in order to get this money. And then we had to have a school goal. And, oh, if you were at a Title I school, you were only going to get a proportion of that goal because, or a percentage of the money, because your school wasn't getting enough and high enough scores. You weren't working hard enough. So while we were jumping through all these other hoops, other people that were not being considered underpaid because they, people like the superintendent, people like the associate superintendents, everyone decided they needed more money. So then all of a sudden, everybody has a goal, and a lot of their goals weren't even measurable goals. They were just getting it if our district had an A rating. Well, who earned the A rating? That would be the students and teachers in this district that were working their tails off to get an A rating. But the district was all getting their goal, and they were getting their money. Where was that money coming from? It wasn't coming from the 301. So, in, when you're looking at it from a teacher's perspective, and since I don't know, because you guys don't tell me where that money's coming from, I see it as coming from the money that was supposed to go to our raises, to our base. Because it's got to be coming from somewhere, and as soon as we got the 301, we no longer got raises. So, then all of a sudden, our taxes go down, our economy falls apart, and guess what happens to all the teachers? Salary increases. They disappeared, and we were having to lose thousands of dollars off of our pay. And I didn't know what was going on. I was very young back then. And I said, wait a minute, you made a mistake. I, what happened to my pay? You just cut my raise. And they said, oh, no, we didn't cut your pay. That was all 301 money. So basically, they were telling me, you haven't got a raise in years. You thought you were getting a raise, but you just didn't understand because you didn't go to the board meetings, and you weren't involved. And I was blind because I was young. Well, now I'm old, and I've come to a lot, a lot of board meetings, and I listen to this stuff, and now I am nothing but frustrated. And I want to know, if there is no money for you guys to pay out of this, where is the money coming from to pay the superintendent a $35,000 bonus? Where is the money coming from to pay all these other people these bonuses? The reason teachers were getting the 301 is because they were underpaid. I didn't hear anyone screaming at the district office, we were underpaid, because many of them were not. People go to the district office to get raises, and they don't even need a college degree. So I am very confused on, if you can explain to everyone in this room, where is the money that goes to pay all these other people their bonuses, or I don't know what you want to call, they're getting? We call it our 301 goal that we've had forever, and we've had to do our evaluation. Where is the money to give these people and all these other people theirs? I'm not saying they don't deserve it, but I am saying that that was voted on, and we were going to, supposed to be considering getting that on top of our normal raises. And then all of that went away, and all we get is 301. And now we're fighting for the 301 that was supposed to go to us, because that's now going for other stuff.
So, Kristy, just to clarify? You don't look old.
I what?
You don't look old. At all. I'm looking older by the minute, but you don't. So, I think what, one of the things Ms. Cooper was asking is for admins' performance pay, obviously, that doesn't come from 301. I think part of her question was, where does that come from? I'm assuming it comes out of M&amp;O. Would that be, or, maybe I shouldn't assume anything at this point.
President Frank, so we have, the board approved a performance pay plan for all employees. The teaching, certified teachers receive their performance pay from Fund 12 of the Classroom Site Fund. All other employees receive performance pay, and it has typically or historically been funded from the indirect cost fund, which is a fund that allows us to charge a percentage to federal grants, because they won't allow us to provide direct costs to support those grants. For example, we can't hire a payroll person despite having employees being funded from, let's say, a Title I, for example, grant. But our payroll department has to run the payroll for all those Title I employees, so they allow us to charge a percentage of the grant, and we get to recapture that in the indirect cost fund.
So there's a whole new fund we haven't even talked about?
It's, well, we, it wasn't on the agenda for tonight, but to answer your question, there is an indirect cost fund. It's one of our five cash funds that we use to also balance the budget, and that funds, or has funded, performance pay for the rest of the set.
Okay, right, so that doesn't, obviously, that does not come out of 301, which is the discussion for tonight. And I think the other reference that Ms. Cooper made to those years when teachers saw a salary decrease, my understanding was that that was because of the decrease in the Classroom Site Fund. I'm remembering a year when I got a 2.5% pay cut, followed by another 2%, 2.5% pay cut, and that was only, only teachers saw that cut.
That is correct. So in 2009, 10, and 10-11, those two years, the Classroom Site Fund had an adjustment to it, and it included a bunch of prior adjustments that the Joint Legislative Budget Committee made in the allocation. They deferred that over two years. Instead of taking one big giant 4% reduction, ended up being just under 4%.
Right.
That was allocated to those two years, and there was a reduction to the certified contracts for those.
And my recollection is that my base pay went down.
Just as we talked previously, because in, in some of the funds, the actual Fund 11 and Fund 13 amounts are base, in the base pay of employees.
But that did not affect other employee groups.
Correct. They never received any Fund 11 or Fund 13 money, so there was no money to actually reduce in their bank.
Okay, so you can see why people might feel a bit testy about this. So, Mrs. Fisher, did you have something you wish to, and then we'll go to our next community member.
Actually, I have quite a bit, because I think we need to determine, first of all, what we're doing here. Because this is supposed to be a study session to learn about what we, where we are at, what we've done, and it's, I understand everybody is historically angry. I, historically, I heard it all when I was running, and a lot of it we fixed, we fixed what we could, but we're not getting anywhere tonight with that. So I really want us to know what we're doing tonight. Is, is the goal of tonight to discuss the 18, 19? Because I think we were fairly clear that we wanted 100% into it. So I want to know, is that what we're doing? And when it comes to the 17, 18, are we looking to completely undo our budget and completely rewrite the budget and move funds? Because I understand there may or may not be funds somewhere to pay for something, but it is irresponsible for a $260 million budget to find ourselves digging in the couch cushions to figure out, because we just said, well, we had a plan, and then we decided, nah, on one day, we're going to undo it all. So I think we need to have an idea of what our end goal is here tonight. Because I hear, I hear numbers, and I hear them all the time, thrown out from every individual, you will only get 40%. Well, you get 40% plus 34% of 40%. And it's like, so we need, we need to see what the real picture is, and what are we looking to do, what are we accomplishing tonight? Otherwise, we're going to get to the end of two hours, and we're going to be no further along than we are currently, I guess.
Okay, and thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. McGlorino, and then we'll go to our community member.
And so I have a slide that's next steps, and you, I know you guys have the printed version, it's the, I believe, the last slide in the deck. Essentially, I think the direction that I need, and obviously, we're in a study session, so I'm not asking for a vote... so I'm not asking for a vote here, is we need to determine what changes we want to make to the, to the 18 plan, so that I can incorporate them in the information that I share with the board in advance of the May 15 meeting. And then I was asked to include the fiscal year 19 plan to also be considered on May 15, and I have that here to share with you this evening. And it does represent 100% of the new allocation going to teachers. So if we get to that slide, I know there are some other people that want to provide some info.
Okay, and we will get to that slide. And Mrs. Fisher, thank you for redirecting us back. The purpose is to look at, what do we potentially want to do, if anything, to 1718, and then going forward, what we want to do next year with the allocation. It's just, this is an issue that, there's a lot of emotion surrounding it, but thank you for redirecting us back. So if you would please state your name.
Hello, I'm Sally Vanswold. My friends know me as Sally Veezy. I was going to ask the same question that Mrs. Fisher asked, because we only have two months left in the 1718 budget, and I assume a great deal of that money has been spent. It's all been allocated. Certainly more interested in 1819 and what's going to happen with that. For the 1819 year, nothing has been approved, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Really, that's all I was wondering.
Okay, thank you. And next community member, we have a line.
Oda, can you go back to the menu money breakdown? Yeah, okay, so you're saying, and I'm rewording this, so I can make sure I understand this. So this is out of Fund 13, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this is Fund 13. You're saying that 2.36 go into base, another additional 1.9 go into new higher salary, whatever, but then we have basically 2.1 that go into two other categories. My question is, the state assessment intervention and the teacher development can, there's no reason why those funds can't be taken from elsewhere, correct? Not from Fund 13?
That is correct.
Okay, so you can't, like, you can take all, and I guess we'll see it in the 19 budget, all of the Fund 13 into salary, whether it's base, or the addenda, or whatever, how you ever want to define it, 100% of that into Fund 13, and take those other two items from elsewhere in the budget?
Correct. And what we have in the plan, if we get to it, is we've identified, of that 2.1, we've identified about $850,000 of essential items that we need to move into the MNO budget. So we'll get to that.
Thank you.
Maria Leva? And then I promise you can go to your next slide.
Just mine is more of a comment, just to redirect, just like what was said previously by Ms. Cooper, that this has been happening, happening for 17 years, since 2001, since the famous 41.8 was imposed. We want to believe that this is kind of permanent, but things have come and gone in and out of Fund 13. So the list that we have for this year of our budgeted, not what was, not the encumbrances, because what I just heard Mr. Migliarino say of the $825,000 that was carried forward for this year is closer to $1 million now. That means money that the district so desperately needed that was not spent, that could have been put to employee salaries. That, I think, is more exasperating than anything, because there was a $995,000 carry forward from Fund 13 two years ago. That is particularly concerning to me. Not only that, there are individual people's salaries that are coming out of Fund 13 that should be paid out of MNO, because they are employees, and they should not be being paid out of money that could go towards employees. If we took the $2.1 million, and we divided it by the 1,935 teachers eligible, that would be a little over $1,000. Or if we did a flat percentage, that would be a 2% raise for everybody in that certified category. I mean, let's put it that way. Given the recent events down at the Capitol, and the reason why we had to adjust our calendar and our days, now is the time to make a change. Now is not the time for status quo. You have the opportunity next week to change all of this and this Fund 13. Please take advantage of that opportunity, and don't repeat what happened last June, which was more of the same. That's all these people are requesting. Stop the madness, and let's return back to sanity, and put the money where it belongs in every, 100% of people's salaries, not an individual's salary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leva. Mr. Migliarino, if you want to progress to the next slide?
Okay, so again, one of the things that we'll need to determine is the $250, and just to put it in perspective, that's about 95% of the allocation. I know it's been talked about, that the district initiative is like $2.1 million. I think what's important to note is, that's an accumulation of unspent money over the 17 years, right? So it would, it would be, we would not be able to sustain a $2.1 million addition to teacher salaries, because once that carry forward is spent, it would not, would not be renewed in the future year. But again, there is a percentage that is not being allocated of the total, so we can increase it, that's, that's for sure. So I just want to make sure that.
So of the 250 FTE paid to teachers in June 2018, that is, are you suggesting a one-time payment or added to performance pay, or how would that work?
And so that's a great comment or question, because we do have a performance pay scheduled, and something unique this year, the Classroom Site Fund was actually established at an amount that included a one-time amount, that in our salary recommendation for this year, we indicated that we would increase a one-time payment to, to those that qualified in the performance pay. So not only pay out Fund 12 on June 7th is the targeted pay date, but also to include the balance of the one-time money that the JLC included in the allocation for this year. This would be in addition to that amount. So that is roughly a little over $100 that's still owed to teachers in a one-time payment, but this would be an additional $250 on top of that, is what's being suggested here.
So if my math is correct, that's 350?
It's probably a little bit north of 350. I'm being a little conservative with the estimate, and that's if we, if we agree on $250, right? Because it can be more, it can be less. I will, I will tell you that it can be no more than, I think you get to $400, and you spend the, you may even spend more than the actual allocation with the carry forward, just doing the math quickly in my head.
Right, so then I think what would be helpful for, for me, and hopefully for the other board members, would be to see those district initiatives, those, the $529,000, what the impact to that is. Because I'm assuming if we're paying more than 250, then that eats into that $529,000.
President Frank, that's correct.
So looking at where those initiatives could possibly come from, and what we want to do in terms of continuing with, canceling. If teachers are planning on that summer, those summer work teams, then that, you know, I've done those summer work teams. It was nice to have the check, but, so that would be helpful for us to have, to look at.
Certainly.
In terms of determining that amount of money. Mrs. Ordway, and then we'll go to our community member.
No, no, go ahead.
Are you sure?
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, and perhaps we could get a little bit more detailed to the, what we might, I don't know when all of that's going to come in, but it might bring us closer to a real number. Not that your numbers aren't real and beautiful, Jim.
A more precise number? Well, okay. Okay, please state your name.
Hi, I'm Debbie Humpel, President Frank's and board members. I didn't realize, after hearing the speaker, that it was 17 years ago that we worked for 301. Time has flown. But I do want to let you know that I was one of those people, as a younger teacher, that petitioned and walked door to door, listening to parents, listening to teachers, trying to get signatures, trying to make pay more equitable throughout the state for districts that didn't have bond opportunities, to give teachers some kind of equity. And what I truly remember in that time, and always had faith in, was that it was going directly to the teachers. And the mantra was that there were not to be hoops that were jumped through. This was an opportunity to express that we value education in this state, and this is a small token to begin showing that expression. And I was, I've heard rumors, that's why I'm here tonight, I don't normally attend the board meetings, that, you know, we haven't been giving the teachers the money. We've been taking 41%, and the rest has been used for the district. I retired from Paradise Valley. I can tell you that as a veteran of 25 years in that district, we never had the kind of goal setting that you have here, and it's a pretty good district. We had school-wide goals that we set, and collaboratively and collegially, we worked towards those goals for our students. And that's how we earned our 301. And it was very disappointing when I came here and saw that it was rather disjointed, that teachers were having to work separately to obtain money that really, in the voting sector, was to be given to them. So I urge you tonight to think very carefully about what our voters have asked for, and this has been renewed for the next 10 years. This is not something that people have said, "Enough is enough." It's valued enough in this state that they've said, "We want to commit to this for 10 more years." But I think after the Red for Ed, parents are starting to recognize, I hear parents say all the time in the grocery store, "Our teachers deserve more, our teachers deserve more." And I used to think in my mind, "Yeah, we'll do something about it." And now they did do something about it. It wasn't just teachers. And I think that people will be very disappointed if they see that 41% is only going to teachers in the Deer Valley Unified School District. We're a major school district. We're not a little tiny district. We are known throughout the state, and we are A, B, and C schools, but mostly A and B schools. And we're proud of that, and you should be proud of your teachers. Thank you.
Well, actually, I talked to some teachers in a little tiny, teeny tiny district of Arlington, and they get 100%. A teacher that I spoke with only had one master's degree and 10 years of experience, and she was making $10,000 more than I was when I left Deer Valley, with two master's degrees and the same years of experience. But there are a lot of other things they don't have in Arlington that, so they put that money towards the teachers. Eric Bolus?
Hi, Eric Bolus, Deer Valley High School. And I may be a little bit of ahead of your presentation, Mr., or Ms. Reginald, but what the, one thing that hasn't been brought up yet as far as money, and we're fighting for the 1.5 going to new teacher salaries, and the other monies for the PDs, the addendums, and hard to fills, and all that kind of stuff. Going forward to the 1819 budget, I haven't heard anybody talk about the DAA money that was passed by our legislature that's going to increase $100 million starting July 1st, go up to $370 million within five years. The fact that the 20% raise to the teachers went into the base of the state budget, which, because it went into the base, then raises our value of our override, so the money coming in should be able to cover the new teacher competitive wage, that 1.5 million, cover that $600,000, and give us easy, and you do the numbers more than I do, obviously, but it just seems that to get the teachers 100% of Fund 13 seems more reasonable and easier to do than it ever has before, so.
Thank you. Do board members have questions, comments? Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Fisher.
Can you clarify, because that seems to be the sticking point, is that new teacher salary. It's to raise the base or whatever. Because we hear that out of the 301, they only get 41%, which, that doesn't even add up here from what we're seeing. So can you clarify what, what exactly we're doing? Because it sounds, I mean, we want it all to go into, 100% into teachers, and I think we made that clear for the coming year, but that's, that is all teachers. So our new teachers would also be a part of that, and our senior teachers, and so our oldest in the district teacher, as well as our just hired yesterday teacher, they will all be in that fund, that puddle. But when we look at this, there's no conversation about the base salary or performance pay. We're, because what concerns me is exactly what the speaker just said, is community members think we're only giving them 41% of the entire 301 money. And I, we need to understand what is actually happening, because from what I'm seeing, that's not accurate. It doesn't, it's, we're looking at 41.8, so is the, what is it, sorry, I have decided I'm blind as I get old. The 34%, is that an addition to, or is that because we have to hire those teachers, and they would be in the dark blue had we not hired them? What is that? Can you clarify that?
President Frank, Ms. Fisher, I think, I think this is a little bit, this is a concept that we maintain that information just for historical purposes, so that we can identify why that information is the way it is, and to verify the actual dollar amount. But once that expense is actually continued after the first year, it's just, it's just a teacher expense, regardless of where it gets funded from. So the, because the 41.8 was, at one point in time, a sacred percentage, remember, we tried to round, I say remember, I don't know that you remember, we tried to round that number up, actually, and could not even get it rounded to a, it's been 41.8. I'll never forget that number. I want to forget that number, so I think you guys are helping me, I believe. But the reason that those amounts are shown in that fashion is only for historical purposes to know how that got that way in the first place. Because originally, it was just the 41.8, and the balance, the entire balance was saved for district initiatives. And over time, that has changed, and at the time that it was changed, the board approved flat increases instead of changes to that sacred percentage for a number of reasons, I think, and so it's.
Previous, previous boards.
Previous boards, exactly.
Well, I guess what confuses me, because no, I was not around back then. Well, I was in the district, but I was raising a special needs child, so I was lucky that I saw daylight in those years. But the total of what I know and a lot of others know is that Kristy Augusta sat back somewhere and came up with this Hiccupamini plan. That's what I've heard. I don't know. So I guess I need, I really do need to understand what this is and why we're doing this. Is that truly a teacher salary? Because if it's, if it's going to a teacher, I'm happy. But if it's not, and it's being reflected as something different, that's where I want the truth, and I want it out here in our boardroom. Because when you get on Facebook, and you get on Twitter, and you get on, you know, somebody sends an email or some, "Oh, we're only getting 2% of this." Okay, you're getting 2% of 130% or whatever. There's all these numbers tied up, and then I have teachers who, they don't want to have to mess with this crap, they just want to get paid. And they're sitting back in their classrooms thinking, "Okay, I've got lesson plans, I've got all these other things to do, and now I have to figure out, because I'm getting robbed from someone." We need open and honest and hear. And so I don't believe any of, well, the ones who were here, and some that even were in the district, may not understand what that is, so I, whether it's a Thursday update or if you can explain it now, or, but I think we need to understand what this 40%, because it's 40% of the whole 301, how it's being chopped up. I mean, we've already established, we want 100% of it going in, moving forward. But we need to understand what this means. Not even so much for us, but our employees have a right to know what that means, because if they're, if they, if they believe that they're being hosed over because someone told them something, then they don't trust anyone anymore. And I don't blame them. And so if we don't clarify what this is and what this really means transparently, it doesn't matter what we do, there's still going to be everyone that's unhappy, because there's going to be some who believe, "Well, you know, Betty Jo told me we're only getting this, and she's my bestie, so I believe it." And someone else is going to say, "We should not be tearing each other apart," but we need to know what that is.
So then to summarize the discussion so far, Ms. Fisher's asking for the historical perspective and the explanation.
perspective and the explanation, excuse me, as I have my coughing fit. Um, and then also, we're looking for information on the, um, balance for the district initiatives to determine what changes, if any, could be made to two thousand seventeen eighteen.
To, to follow up, I think the other thing that was missing, well, two things, is what if anything could be paid out of other funding for last year's? And then in terms of this year, the hundred percent includes the, the new teacher salary, right? When you say a hundred percent's going to teachers?
I'm sorry, just for clarification, you said, what could be paid from last year? Last year is closed out?
No, no, current year, I'm sorry, I meant current year.
Okay.
And then, and then in terms of next year's? When you say a hundred percent, you're including the portion that's paid into the new teacher salary schedule?
Um, I have a slide for that, we might even get to it sometime. Um, it, it, we, it would increase the amount, and, uh, all teachers would get, when we calculate even the, um, the two point three million and one point nine million dollars, that, that gets developed into a, a, a dollar amount, and you can see it there, the a thousand twenty-five and eight fifty, if I'm seeing that right. Um, that, that's the amount that each teacher sees in their, in their base pay, and is identified in their, in their contract. So that amount will change if we change the dollar amounts below, right? So if a hundred percent goes in, then those amounts go up, and each teacher that qualifies receives those dollars.
So on the current year, okay, so explain to me, and I'm sorry, I'm trying, I'm trying to understand what you're saying. On the current year, what percentage is paid to new teacher salaries?
Again, the, the information that's identified here, uh, of the one point nine is just for historical purposes to memorialize that back in oh seven, we increased the teacher pay. But it doesn't go directly to those teachers. That amount is, in total, is calculated to be able to, uh, provide every teacher with eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So, so for next year, you're saying a hundred percent, so there's really nothing to negotiate for more, we can't go over a hundred percent. You're saying a hundred percent for next year?
Uh, that is the proposed plan that I have, but the board gets to make that decision, so yes. I, I mean, I don't know how you could go over a hundred percent.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Could you tell us your name?
Listen, my name's Lisa Borchers, and I'm a teacher here, um, I teach at Mount Rush High School. So I, I'm sorry, Mr. Reddick, will you go back one slide?
Um, I, which, this one? This one?
Yes, that one. I know, I'm so sorry. Um, so I don't get a hard to fill addenda, because I'm an English teacher, so do I not get a port, that, like, if the one point nine, six, six, like, so I don't get that portion of the three oh one, because I don't have a hard to fill addenda, is that correct? Or is that just a one-time thing that happened one time?
Um, so, uh, again, we show it here for historical purposes. What you actually have in your check is eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is what everybody has. Every teacher that qualifies gets eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars of the classroom site fund money from Fund thirteen.
Okay.
Um, it, it, we got to eighteen seventy-five instead of, I'll make up a number-
Right.
-fourteen twenty-two, because, um, because of these two pots of money, right? The, the forty-one point eight percent and the one point nine million dollars in flat increase.
Okay. Because it says on there, so I under, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding, because I've been to a few of these and I get confused. Um, so the increase of teacher hiring schedule, that was like in two thousand and seven or something, and so that doesn't happen every year, that only happened that in two thousand and seven?
Uh, that's correct, but it, ongoing expense, obviously, right? Once, once it was added to their salaries, then we continued to pay them after that.
Through, through, through the Site thirteen money or through other monies?
Um, the, these funds actually, um, is, they're an allocation that actually paid for that the first time, and the ongoing expense is paid from here as well.
Okay. So, so then, the, the thing that I'm, so that means to me that the, I'm not a money person, I'm an English teacher, so, um, so then I'm not getting that portion of that money? Because new teachers are getting that portion of that money?
No, I, I think, I, I, maybe to, to state this, uh, to, to explain it a little better, is that initially, the first year, there was a select group of, of, of teachers that received the benefit, but every year thereafter, everybody gets a share of it.
Okay.
Right? So, you know, because that expense is now an ongoing expense when we added it to a salary amount-
Uh huh.
Then we just increase it in the amount that every teacher gets, uh, from this base salary. But it is fair to say that that first year that it's implemented, it only benefited those that actually received it. But the ongoing expense then gets distributed over the amount that is received by everybody.
Got it.
And you can correct my grammar, and I'll help with the math, okay?
Thank you. You can't trust me to add or subtract, I'm not going to lie. All right, thank you.
I've survived, I've come back, the reports of my death have been greatly exaggerated.
Okay, so-
Please state your name.
I'm Vicki Jones. And I've been in this district for decades and decades and decades. I have been here forever. I don't know why I stayed, might have to do with the fact that I went to Village Meadows Elementary School. We were the first graduating class from Deer Valley, at that time it was called Deer Valley Junior High. And I don't know, my mom worked in the district, um, I, I just have a lot of friends, a lot of people I've known that's worked in the district. I seriously, in my first seven years of teaching, thought I was going to leave Deer Valley District, because I just felt like, back then, they did not prioritize the teachers, that we were not important. They didn't value the link, the direct link to the students. Students are what have kept me here, and probably, starting out here from the beginning that goes back so many years. I will tell you, I've watched this district grow and grow and grow, and it's really sad that every year, teachers are begging to get something. When that money was decided by taxpayers, when it was voted on, it was meant for teacher salaries, it's not meant to go other places, even if the legislature did not, even if there legally is a way that it can go in other places, it was meant for the teachers and the taxpayers feel deceived. And I've heard that many times over. I don't know if you know, but during this rough time when teachers were out of class, we did not like that. I didn't like that. I'm behind, it's messed up some things that I'm trying to do at the end of the year, some of my activities. But I will tell you, I listened to talk radio, um, Deer Valley District was a topic of conversation, and I'm embarrassed of the things that they were saying. I don't know anything about the Prop three oh one, I can't speak on that, or, or the Prop one, two, three, I can't speak on that, but that was a topic of conversation, and we got blasted for that. Callers, people calling in, also three oh one, why isn't Deer Valley, quote, giving their teachers the money that taxpayers expected the teachers to get? This is on talk radio. And I'm so proud of being a teacher, coaching, love this district, but I have to say honestly, I've never felt good about, it's been, well, let me just say it this way, it's been an us against them, the district office and the teachers. And it's just, it's never been, we are going to take care of our teachers. My neighbor just left another neighboring district and went to a private school. She received a letter from the principal of this new school, you need to know as a teacher, we value you, and we, you are receiving, this is a private school and not a public school, you, all teachers here will receive one hundred percent of the money. I don't know why it's so hard for this district, for the people in this district, to just forget that the teachers are the direct link, the teachers are making the difference in the classroom. I don't know why this district finds creative ways to use money, and it's actually not even being used in some areas. Elementary teachers took that line item budget and said, we haven't done that in four years, we haven't done that in four years, yet it's still on there, and money's being budgeted for it. They, elementary teachers highlighted three areas where money was being budgeted for, and it's not being spent on that. The teachers have had to do, everything Christie said is exactly right, teachers have had to jump through hoops. When I was younger, I worked those three part-time jobs on Saturday mornings and five-thirty in the morning teaching aerobics before I came to school, because I could not live off the money that teachers were making. And these teachers that are doing it now are just done. People are just done, it's too many years. It's so sad that I have two daughters with education degrees from NAU and ASU, and neither one of them want to teach. It's not worth it, Mom, why do you keep doing it? It's not worth it. And it hurts, because teaching is a very, very rewarding profession. It's a great profession, but it's hurting. We are losing our teachers, they're leaving our district, and they're not going into this profession. I just would like to say that I don't know why we need to talk about percents, because there should be no discussion. That Fund thirteen should be one hundred percent to all teachers, and then we don't have to get caught up with understanding all these different percentages, and who gets it and who doesn't get it, and just give a hundred percent to your teachers, now's the time to do it. Please, please consider that. Teachers that already retired lost out sixteen years of getting that amount of money on their, on their, um, retirement amount. That is sad. And teachers coming up, getting ready to retire, are going to lose it. It was intended for the teachers, please give one hundred percent of Fund thirteen to your teachers. I'm already, I've lost out on some things, but I don't want to see these teachers leaving the profession. We need teachers, and we need men in this profession. We need to hang on to people. I have two friends of mine right now that are investigating private schools, they are leaving Deer Valley District because of what's going on. So I'm asking you, please, don't spend any more money, whatever money is there this year, don't spend any more. Take that and next year, and give it all to your teachers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I know I had to step out of the room for a minute. Have we gotten to, um, item B on our study session?
No.
Okay. All right. So I, I want to, I'll give you an opportunity to speak in a minute, I kind of want to circle back around, um, because, you know, we are now at a quarter of eight, um, and I'd like for us to focus on item B. Is, are there any further questions? I think on, on A. Does Mr. Reddick, you understand the information the board needs prior to the May fifteenth meeting, or do you have any questions for us?
I do not.
Okay. And board members, we're good with? Okay. So, um, why don't you move forward with, um, item B? We'll take a look at some of your slides, we'll give some of our community members who have waited a chance to speak.
Um, and, and I think I can be brief with this, so-
Okay.
President Frank, uh, so, a, a possible solution from the feedback that we've seen and heard, um, was to take an portion, a hundred percent of the new allocation to teachers, and the carryforward would be used to, to fund limited district initiatives. Um, and what that requires, you know, a result of that decision is about eight hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars worth of, uh, um, ongoing expenses. Uh, one of the speakers actually mentioned that there are some employees that are funded from that. So of the two point one million dollars, we believe that eight hundred and ninety-three thousand is essential. Uh, most of that is, um, in software, at six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that's our learning management system, as well as our assessment system. And then there are some ongoing, as I mentioned, staff, staffing-related costs of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. The, uh, this also proposes that the, whatever the balance of the carryforward would be, would be used for any other future district initiative, um, that would still have to fall within the allowable categories of the statute. Um, there are some implications, as noted in the, in the corner, in which that, that there would be a reduction of professional development, um, for staff and other curricular supports that are currently being funded from Fund thirteen slash fourteen. But the actual plan that I wanted to share would look something like this. Um, the per pupil allocation goes up significantly, um, to four hundred and twenty-three dollars per, per, per pupil. Um, this, uh, is proposing that the five hundred and twenty thousand dollars in Fund thirteen on the far right, um, in carryforward, again, that amount's probably going to change based on what, whatever is approved by the board in terms of allocation that goes to teachers in the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year. But you can see that the projected per pupil amount goes up in, in all of the funds, and here we're showing a hundred percent of the new allocation, or, uh, virtually six point five million dollars, uh, would be going to, um, the teacher salary. And if all five hundred and twenty thousand dollars was not spent by June thirtieth, um, I just arbitrarily, uh, put two hundred thousand dollars in the Ames Intervention category and three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in teacher development. Again, that assumes that there's five hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of carryforward. If that money is spent in terms of allocation, uh, by increasing the allocation to greater than two hundred and fifty dollars, um, that was, uh, proposed in fiscal year eighteen, it would reduce that amount.
Okay, so the carryforward is what's being carried forward from this year? Because if we're giving them a hundred percent, there shouldn't be any carryforward, carrying forward?
Correct. So the, the first decision that needs to be made as to what we're, what are we doing in fiscal year eighteen?
Right.
Uh, and if I jump back to this slide here, that, that five twenty is the same number that you see at, at the bottom of the possible classroom site fund revisions. And again, I arbitrarily picked two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, and I just kept it that, because that's what I shared with the board initially.
Okay.
I don't have any direction, you asked me if I have any questions. That's probably the very first question that I need to have answered, and I know, I think I'm answering your question with a question or my question with a question.
Well, it's unfair.
Um, the, uh, but until I know what that dollar amount is that we want to assign to, uh, to individuals, um, it, it will obviously affect the plan, um, that we look for in, in the development for, for next year as well.
And I think some of that, the number that would, that proposed number that could come from this year, that would somewhat be influenced by the things that are still yet need to be paid, what funds those could be taken from. So that gets back to our, you, I'm throwing the question back at you.
Yes, I, I think we have a circular reference now.
I, I think we do. Other comments, questions from board members? Okay. All right, please state your name.
Rex McAlhany from Paseo Hills. Twenty-one years in the district. Ms. Fisher, I think you first, you mentioned a matter of trust. Uh, that's why I felt compelled to come up here, because it is a matter of trust. Uh, Ms. Frank, um, I believe it was the last board meeting, you had mentioned the silent walkout, and I deeply thank you for recognizing all the people that unfortunately have already walked out. Paseo Hills, our letter increased this year. We trust each other, we pull together. Um, I'm not sure why, if our district doesn't get an A, we don't get a hundred percent. We're all pulling together. And then, on a slight personal note, um, I was able to quit a ten-year, uh, second job cashiering, because my wife got a significant raise. We're wanting our significant raise. And then, if we had PD money before three oh one, um, where is it now, or where did
President Frank, I, I don't think I can answer that question, um, because so, so much time has been, has passed, and, and I wasn't with the district when Prop three oh one was, was approved, so.
I have one question, though, because it's, it's something that he, that he mentioned, and it's, it's been mentioned a few times. And I was pretty sure, um, because I, I seem to recall I was the one that pushed for it, that, because they're in statute, they have to have a grade, but it was just use the district grade and just let everybody have it, not make them jump through hoops. And, and so, and I know that there was a kind of a push this year to take it back to schools, and I still don't agree with that, but where are we at? Is, is that, is that, I thought that's where we already were.
You're talking about the, the performance pay plan that was approved?
Percentage of schools that were three or one category.
Right.
Yeah, I just thought it was just a curve.
Well, I don't think there, there isn't a district grade anymore, if I'm, please correct me.
No, there's not.
That is correct.
Right, so, so going forward, it's based on the percentage of schools that have an A or B, and-
Right.
And if we have that, if we hit that percentage, then a hundred percent is paid out.
But it hits everyone.
And, and it hits everyone.
And it's a hundred percent of F eleven, F twelve, and F thirteen?
Uh, that is just the performance pay plan, so it's just Fund twelve. That is just the performance pay plan, so it's just Fund 12.
F12.
F12.
I guess my initial question is, I think we would like F11, F12, F13, just 100%.
For F11?
Correct. Just for mathematical purposes, if all the letter accounts, so I don't, are all lumped in one, it's 100% of 301.
Right.
I think where the confusion comes in is we didn't just decide arbitrarily that we wanted to have three funds. We didn't just say, "We want to Fund 11, Fund 12, and Fund 13." The legislature said in their, what they passed, or what was passed, was that you will have this and it will be for this purpose. You will have this, it will be for this purpose. And then you will have this and that's the menu money. The other two, Fund 11 and 12, and that's why I said earlier that I think it's important that we let our, our community needs to know that our teachers, we don't get this giant amount of money in these three funds and we only give teachers 41% of Fund 13. They get 100% of Fund 11 and 100% of Fund 12.
Correct.
And I think it's, that's why I said it's important that they recognize that it's not, the voters wanted that and that, and we are giving it. What we're, what we need to address this year is the Fund 13 because you're already getting 100% of the other two. And I believe that's the direction we, we did push for. The amount is in question, is that 520? And that's been, because over the years, something happened and it's not rolled, it's not spent out. So it's, it's rolled over. And so that's what is going to pay the bills that we don't know about yet. In other words, you were sent on a professional development, I'm just gonna use you because you're sitting there, and you used a district pro, a district PE card, okay? And so your total expense on that PE card is $2,000. It's unrealistic, but let's just say it is. That bill hasn't come in yet. So accounts payable is gonna have to pay that bill. That is gonna come from that 520. And if that 520 is not spent, that's when it rolls. Does that make more sense?
Okay. I guess I, I am referring to the 18-19 and the, I guess it was understood that F11, 12 go to teachers, the menu money. I guess my point was the matter of trust and that 100% of 301, pulling together, like as mentioned, Paseo, pulling together, we increased our grade.
Right. And the, and the plan that is reflected on the screen above does show 100% of all three funds.
Correct.
Being proposed for the 18-19 year to go to the teachers.
So, so in terms of voting, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. O'Brien, go ahead.
That's okay. So, and that's what you're, you're supporting and, and asking for our support of?
Yeah. And I think my last question, and, and I guess it, we didn't track money backwards, but before 301, there was PD money. What was supplanted?
What is PE money?
Professional development, PD.
Oh, I thought you said.
I thought you said E.
No.
I apologize.
I heard PE also.
Professional, I apologize.
I heard PE.
Professional development monies were there before.
And Jim wasn't, and he wasn't here.
Correct.
It's not really, we're not able to really answer that question.
Yeah, I think it's.
So I think, but I do think we all hear absolutely the point you're making and, and the request that you're making of the board.
I think it's after 17 years, what, $35 million discrepancy?
So we can't go back in time. My time machine is broken and there's other things I would fix in my life before. So we can't go back in time and fix what, stop laughing, Ms. Tweedy, and fix what other boards did. We, we can, we can look at the allocation, at making some adjustments for the 17-18. And then we can, going forward, look at the plan for 18-19. But we can't go back any further in time than that and, and change what other boards voted on or, or did or administrations recommended, unfortunately.
I apologize because that wasn't my intent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we want to do, you know, what we can going forward.
Thank you. And I think we're trusting that you'll do that.
Okay.
Sally Veezy. I was here 17 years ago. I was outside because there wasn't enough room. It was the old room. The district could have voted that night to take the 40% from Fund 13 and put it all into teacher salaries. And a couple of the board meetings wanted intervention for high school kids. And it was a, I believe, a 3-2 vote. I can't remember that part. No one ever expected these funds to come up with this kind of money. And back then, we were getting $2,000 and $3,000 raises every year. So we didn't have an empty eight, 10-year block where people's salaries got frozen. I am amazed at how little people are making now that have been here for 20, 25 years. When I say I retired seven years ago and my last three salaries were $68,000 to $70,000 as just a teacher, people are amazed. So, and I want that for everyone. And we didn't have to pay 11% either. So no one really expected back then that 40% of that. David Cantalmy wanted Ames Intervention for high school kids. That's what he wanted with that 40%. Nobody expected it to get to this amount. To me, I'm gonna go outside of all this. I don't think we're doing 100% when we spend an additional 600 grand on teacher salaries. I think because of the recession and all the problems, we've spent M&amp;O money on Fund 13 for years. That should have been M&amp;O money. We didn't get any from the state. So the district has done what it felt it needed to do. And I think we need a plan over the next two to three years to take the funds that are in Fund 13, get them back in M&amp;O, and take all the funds from Fund 13 into all the teacher salaries. That's what these other districts have done. That's how they're getting four and five, $6,000 more. We're talking about, oh, we'll get 1,000 more. Well, there may actually be a chance, the one gentleman talking about the money come from the state, no, we can't put $6 million back to M&amp;O the first year, but maybe over, we could put a million or two and guess what? We'll have to cut stuff. We won't get to have everything. But I see five and six-year-old teachers quitting teaching because they're starving. And we're gonna lose a whole generation of teachers. So my proposal is start to make up a plan on how to move those funds back to M&amp;O over the next two to three years and get, there's 10 years left of 301, at least have some time where that whole entire amount, where all the teachers that qualify for 301 would have a true 100%. Not 100% where we're paying for different stuff. That's it.
Well, I, I think also, you know, when 301 came into existence, there was a salary schedule. So I know when I started in the district, there was a salary schedule. You could look at that and you could count on this year, if I do this many hours, if I have a master's, I'll move over here, I'll, you know, I'll move up, I'll move over. And then that went away at the end of my first year of teaching. And so when the cuts came, you know, it was pretty hard and hasn't really been restored. So I think that's another issue with, with the 301. So I think we have three more community members wishing to speak. It is 8 o'clock. I don't want to cut anyone off. I want everyone to have the opportunity. And so after these three, we'll have Mr. McGlory now present his last slide and then kind of see where we're at time-wise. Because we did budget two hours for this meeting and we started a little bit late. So go ahead and state your name.
My name is Stephanie Flores. I teach at Esperanza. It's my fourth year in the district. So I've got kind of a multitude of questions as I've been sitting here trying to kind of crunch the numbers and, and follow along what's been going on. So first, the first thing that completely shocked me with this was that the base salary percentage went down. And I'm trying to understand why. Because in last year's, it was 40, 40, 20. And now I'm seeing 20, 40, 40. So I don't know, I don't know why that.
It was 20.
It was 20, 40, 40. Okay, so that was maybe a misunderstanding on my part. So then we're getting 41.8% of the 20% of the base salary. Okay.
No, that's not correct. You're getting 41.8% of the 40%.
Right. Of Fund 13 in, but in the, I'm, I'm looking last year compared to this year because I could have sworn it was 40% for Fund 11, 40% for 12, and 20% for 13. Not, not this year, the previous year.
No, those percentages haven't changed since the inception of the classroom site fund. And it's 20% in base salary, 40% in performance pay, and 40% in menu money. And so the current year, this is the current year plan, 2017-18.
Right, okay.
And this is the proposed next year plan.
20, 40, 40.
For, and it's still 20, 40, 40.
Okay.
And the amount, the amount has gone up because the allocation has gone up.
Right. Just looking at the percentages, so that was my misunderstanding, trying to jot things down with all the, all the lovely pie charts and all the blues. So, so that I heard Ms. Tweedy say that teachers are getting 100% of 11 and 100% of 12. Okay. So at least in the breakdown, now I have not yet seen a breakdown for the 18-19 for the coming year. But at least in the breakdown from before, I saw 23%. I mean, there was the 41.8 for us. There was the 30-something that was the new teacher debated. I'm over it. That's fine. But the 23% for state assessment and 14% for PD, I'm trying to understand what, what those are and how that counts as part of our base salary.
It's not part of your base salary.
Okay. So it was last year, but they're not, you're not counting that going forward.
So it, and, and I, just for clarification, you know, current year, last year, this year, I, I mean, so for the, the current school year of 2018.
Yes.
We, the law allows for a multitude of other items in, in addition to teacher salary to be included. And so in this year's plan, this school year's plan, there are other items that were approved by the board when this was approved.
Right. And I get, we can't change that. I, I understand that.
No, we actually, we actually can change that. I mean, we, we can't, you and I can't.
Well, it's, it's spent for the most part.
These five people can. And, and I think that is being proposed for next week.
Yes.
And so that, there is a likelihood for the, the, the plan to change for next, for this current year at next week's board meeting.
Right. Okay. If you could just go backwards one slide for me. Backwards, backwards. Nope, that's not the one it was.
You want me to go forward instead?
Maybe it was forward then. That one. That's the winner right there. That's, so that's the one I'm talking about. So this, this total on this slide only sums up to 20% of the whole. This is, my understanding is this is a breakdown of the, the 20% of the Fund 11. This is all Fund 11 here, yes? Or no?
No, that, this is the Fund 13 menu money and it's 40% of the total.
This is, this is Fund 13, this slide, not 11.
Correct.
Okay. That was my misunderstanding there. Alrighty. And then I just wanted, why, so the, the 20, 40, 40, is that, are those percentages that come from the state or are those percentages that we come up with?
They, they are established in statute.
Okay.
And voter protected.
Okay. I see. And then I, I did see some with the PD and the performance pay. I'm just wondering what we can do to simplify things as far as performance pay or as far as PD. Because, you know, one of the other teachers had mentioned, there's all these different hoops we gotta jump through to get. And I know some of it is, is statute. You know, I know you can't just hand over performance pay, "Good job," and give it to us. But I'm not sure what, what else has to happen. I mean, with the doc logs and with, you know, all of these meetings and more meetings and PR and this and that. It's, it's a lot when what I'm hearing from people who were here way back when, it was designed to be given to us, not as this additional extra everything. And I did see, obviously in the previous plan, the, a percentage of it going to professional development, which yes, does go to teachers, but that's more extra work that I have to do. And that's only if it's offered to me. If that is an eighth-grade math PD, I can't even get it. There's no potential for me to get that. So that's kind of my concern moving forward, is that just because it's going into teacher pockets, I don't think it should be extra work just because we have the opportunity to come and do a summer pay. That's not what this is intended for, is my understanding, like I said, from teachers that have been here. It's not an opportunity for teachers to make more money, it's money given to teachers. So I wanted that to be clear moving forward in, in the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Okay.
Evening. I have a couple of notes. My name's Alan Baker from O'Connor High School. Thanks for taking your time and with the study session. I think some of the things that, that I've been here 17 years, I hired in 2001, second career, and passion of, of teaching. I think that a lot of the frustration when we look at the different numbers and charts is that Ames Intervention doesn't help pay the bills. Teacher Development doesn't help pay the bills. And looking at the last number that you had up here a second ago with software, again, coming out of Fund 13, that doesn't help pay the bills. If you can go forward to the, to the last proposal, please? Perfect. $7 million. You're saying that 100% of that is going to teacher salary. But below that, you have $200,000 going to Ames Intervention, $320,000 going to teacher development. Again, that doesn't help pay the bills. The previous slide, if you can go back just one, please? Software, 625,000. Again, that's coming out of our 301 money. Like to see 100% of that go into 301 to teacher salaries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Go ahead.
Hello. I'm Anna Kramer and I'm a third grade teacher and I'm very nervous because I like being in front of eight-year-olds versus all of you.
Don't be nervous. Some of us are about the eight, eight-year-old level. I'm not. I won't mention any names.
Well, I wanted to begin first of all by just telling you I, I respect this process and for all of you, because this has to be a very difficult process. And I know there's a lot of numbers and things that I, you know, respect everybody's positions and, and what decisions you have to make. And I guess what I want to start with, I think we're all here because we have a real passion for what we do on a daily basis. And I came to this district from Yakima, Washington. And I came here with a master's degree, 14 years of teaching experience, and 83 credits because I was working towards my administrative credentials and then we up and moved. When I moved here and I walked into the district office, I walked out and I said, "Oh my goodness, I just took a $19,000 cut." And not only did I take a $19,000 cut, but I lost nine years of my teaching experience that was just taken from me. They would only give me five. I also lost 65 credits. So I started with an MA. Thank goodness they couldn't take that away from me. And I started with about $35,000. And I lost all of what I felt was my livelihood. I'm gonna get emotional because I love teaching. But I came to this district and I walked out and I remember sitting in that parking lot. I'm sorry. And I called my husband. And my husband said, "What do you want to do?" And I said, "I want to, I want to teach. I'm gonna go back to that classroom." And it didn't matter if I took a $19,000 cut because I love what I do. And I currently, when I looked at my contract, I'm still, after teaching here, thank you, for 15 years, I'm still $1,000 shy of what I made in Yakima, Washington, when I left there 15 years ago. And I did some research and I thought, if I would have stayed in Yakima, Washington, what would I make? And I probably shouldn't have done that because I found out, I found out that I currently, this year, would have been making $68,000. And I also went a little bit further and went, oh, cost of living's just gotta be more there, which I knew it wasn't. But cost of living was four and a half percent lower in Yakima, Washington than it is here in Phoenix. So I know I still love what I do and I'm gonna stay in the classroom, but then I start looking at having to make insurance decisions. And I realized that my husband's self-employed, so I have to cover my family. The plan that I was on last year, which I finally took a leap of faith and did the high deductible plan. And it hurt, hurt my family because I, it was about, I And it hurt, hurt my family because I, it was about, I lost about twenty-three thousand dollars because of a few kidney stones between my premium and my out-of-pocket, my deductible. So when I see that my plan is now gone, that I was on this year, I had to look at other plans. And to cover my family, I am now going to have about a hundred and twenty dollars more. And that's nice because I know the district's covering that increase, but because of changing the plans of what I know my family can budget and afford, I am going to have to pay about nine hundred and seventeen dollars a month to cover my family. So when I look at this plan, I'm just begging you, pleading that you give us a hundred percent of the money because my family needs it to pay even my insurance premium. And then I know that I participate in the Red for Ed and spent a lot of time with Ann and Ann, and I really appreciate you being down there and being supportive. But I look back at that Prop three oh one twenty-three, which I was in that five-hundred club. So I, I didn't even, I didn't even make that money then. So all I'm asking is, again, I want to end with what I began with. I respect this process. I respect all of you as individuals. I respect you as the money man. Boy, I, I wouldn't want your job for anything. I like teaching my third graders math. But I just ask that you really look at this and consider, and as we move forward, that we really do put the whole picture together and that we really do, and I, and I know you respect teachers, but sometimes it's that being able to pay our bills makes that respect a little bit better or more. I don't know what it is or how to say it best. But again, just want to tell you, I, I thank you all for what you do, and I thank you for all you do, because I, again, know that that's why we're here. But if you would just, as you consider that next Tuesday, I don't think we're all here because we don't like what we're doing, we like it, but to have a little bit more money would be even better. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. The, the money up here, that eight hundred and ninety-three, just to clarify for you, that's the money we're moving to M and O. Not, that's not going to be paid out of three oh one. That, that is, that is what we're moving to M and O so that we can pay out that hundred percent. I just want to clarify that slide. I didn't want you to go away thinking that we were still going to pay that out of Fund thirteen. Okay? Okay, so what I'd like to do going forward is have Mr. Migliarino present the last few slides of his presentation. I'd like for, oh, be quiet, Ms. Tweedy. Then have, I can say that, she's my friend. And then have the board, any further questions, comments, and also give Mr. Migliarino some direction going forward so that he'll be prepared for the May fifteenth meeting. And then hopefully kind of wrap things up.
And, and so I, I will be brief. I know that I, I don't need to repeat what we've heard on a number of fronts. I think what we are preparing for, for next week's board meeting is what changes the board would like to, to see so that we can actually provide that information in advance of the meeting and then affect those changes. The, the information that, that I need includes how much of the money that's not encumbered or committed in this current school year, two thousand seventeen, eighteen. How much of that should we be allocating to teachers? Because we have shared two hundred and fifty dollars, and I mentioned before, I, I created that dollar amount just as a discussion point. I didn't change it for this meeting, although I believe the direction that, from the first conversation, was that there was an interest to increase that, that dollar amount. So I think the very first question is, how much should that increase? And I will caution that we could get that as high as four hundred dollars, so I don't want people to get the wrong impression. So somewhere between zero and four hundred. I don't know why I landed on two hundred and fifty dollars. I just.
In the middle.
I guess it was.
Sort of.
It's not in the middle.
It's not in the middle.
Okay, it's not in the middle, but it's a little more. She teaches math, I don't.
So, so I think that's the very first question that, you know, as you mentioned, that you were going to be asking for board members to provide, you know, some direction. And again, we're not voting tonight, right? Just to be able to make sure that I provide information that's helpful to make the decision on the fifteenth. And just, just so the, that we would be clear, that would be included in the teacher's performance payment, performance pay payment that's scheduled for June seventh of this year. So whatever that dollar amount is, we owe them their performance pay that they've earned, we owe them that additional classroom site fund money that was that one-time money, that, that's, that was in the salary recommendation, and then whatever amount the board agrees upon of the uncommitted balance in Fund thirteen and fourteen. In addition, I think for, for nineteen, that will, that will establish everything that we need to know for, for the classroom site fund for nineteen because I have heard no opposition or objection to making sure that one hundred percent of the allocation is actually spent on teachers for, for next school year, two thousand eighteen, nineteen. So I think the only thing that I really need is a number between zero and four hundred. So I don't know, we secret ballot that, or are you going to?
Pick a number out of a hat, or?
Can I ask you to clarify something?
Go ahead.
The rollover, is, was it eight hundred thousand?
It was originally planned for eight hundred and was, we actually realized that at about a million.
So if we don't roll that over, that would be the part of the four hundred? Is that what you're saying?
No, that's included in the, in the two hundred and fifty dollar amount, so let's slide back to.
If that was zero, because you're saying it's going to be rolled into district essentials, right?
No.
Or initiatives? Essential initiatives, was the word.
Actually, I, I use the term essentials for those things that we moved into M and O. And I mentioned that if we reserved any of the carryforward balance in Fund thirteen, that could be used for ongoing district initiatives in the allowable categories.
So, so for four hundred, there would be a zero rollover? Because I'm trying to get at a zero rollover for next year.
Yeah, four hundred gets us very close to, to zero. Again, I can't tell you exactly everything that's committed, but it will be virtually zero. To the point where I don't think it would be, I, I think it would be negligible for when we divided it up over the nearly nineteen hundred employees.
And then, and then the other question, on Fund twelve, I know it wasn't in recent years, but so there was, there's no rollover in Fund twelve, right? Because we pay out a hundred percent of performance pay, there's no rollover there?
There has been rollover, but it's because the payment was split into two payments, and there was a payment in June and then another payment in October as we were waiting for assessment data results to be, be able to make the second payout. So that crosses over the fiscal year, so it does get carried forward. But, but all of the amount gets allocated in the previous, in the, in the following year, preceding year.
So that's going to be paid out altogether this year? There's, there, there's no money in there that's not being paid out to teachers?
For this year, but I believe the performance pay plan that you approved for next year actually has two payments in it. But that's next year's plan.
But it's going to be paid out, okay. Okay, so I'm just making sure there's no money there we have to think about. There's no money there, okay.
Two other board members, Mrs. Fish?
I just wanted to be clear that it. Just because it was paid out in October, so there was a rollover, but it wasn't rolled over and spent in this year, that's, the, the year ends June thirtieth. So if, if the payment's not made at that point in time, and there's a little bit of leeway in, in accounting reasons, but there's not another way to do it. So we'll, I, I don't want us to get to that point and then have another, you rolled over this money when you really didn't. It's just that it couldn't be paid. So it's, it'll look like a rollover, but it won't be because it'll still have to be paid in the next year.
That's all, that's all I'm just making sure.
I know, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear because it was, I don't want us to say that there's not going to be a rollover, then someone says, well, see, I see a rollover. And you will see one unless it's paid out in, in June.
Well, I guess my question was prior to the, we're changing it to a hundred percent payout on the performance pay, was there money in there, or did it get distributed once we changed to a hundred percent payout? I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Not what you're talking about.
And so there, there may have been, there, there are some people who get disqualified from performance pay, right? There, there are a multitude of ways that people become disqualified. And so there could be some residual amount in, in Fund twelve, but it has to stay in Fund twelve. It cannot be moved e, e, even into any of the other classroom site funds. So if there was, it would have been a small amount that would have been included in the Fund twelve amount for future payout.
But we paid it out to other people, then we don't have any money there that's not committed to go to somebody. That's what I'm trying to say.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, Mrs. O'Brien? Or Mrs. Ordway? No, no questions? Okay. Yeah, did you have any feedback directives to?
I thought we already talked about getting a more finite, detailed number before we gave an amount to him, or, or before we would be able to come to a dollar amount. I thought that's what we talked about, about an hour ago.
We did. Yeah, we can. Email.
Jim just needs direction so that he can come back next week. And it's a week away. So, I mean, Jim, I can't say, you know, three hundred and ninety-nine and seventy-four cents. I can't, I can't give you a number like that. I guess what I would say was I would like you to look at what could be done appropriately so that we're not trying to, that we're not completely undoing a, a budget that's already done and spent. You came with two fifty, you said it could go up to four. I would like you to get as close to the highest possible amount. And then whatever amount, you can't then just say, you know, this, this is what is in spent, this is what is encumbered. I am very concerned of the unknowns. I'm concerned about the P card payments because I know those can be thirty, thirty-plus days away. So if you don't have some place for that to come from, I, I would say I wouldn't take that out this year. I, I just want to make sure that we're as high as possible responsibly without crushing the district. We can't, we can't just undo the whole district. So that, that's the best I could do. Because I'm, my fear is that a week away, I'm not sure what you can tell us more, and then we can get back to you and give you enough time to come back with something in a week.
President Frank, Ms. Fisher, I, I agree with you, just that, you know, time is of the essence. And, you know, the things that are going to be foregone with a decision to try and maximize the amount to the, the teachers, I, I can just speak in generalities, right? I'm, I'm hoping that Dr. Gallagher and I saw are taking some notes, so we will certainly provide as much information as we can to the board. But again, they are going to be curriculum supports and professional development opportunities in general. And, and again, we have frozen everything knowing that this conversation's been going on for the past couple of weeks. So we do have a little bit of runout, you know, like you mentioned with P cards and things of that nature. And we'll be able to prevent, or provide some additional information as to kind of what a comfortable range would be for a decision, a formal decision to be made next Tuesday.
To hold the district's sound.
Correct. And so, you know, you remember, my responsibility is trying to make sure that we're good fiduciary, so I'm going to be on the conservative side. That's probably why you shot two fifty instead of four hundred in the, in the, in the first presentation. I just didn't change it even though I did hear that there was some, not direction, but inclination to increase that, to maximize that amount. And that's what I'm hearing again this evening. We'll make sure that we provide that information so the board can make a decision next Tuesday.
So do you feel that we've provided you with clear direction then going forward?
See, I think this is a trap now.
It's not a trap.
No, I don't think, I don't, I don't think any, I don't think any formal decision was made at this study session, but I appreciate the feedback.
No, 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 I just, I, I just, in the past, the board's been criticized for, you know, we didn't know what direction you were going in. You feel that you know, sort of, okay, I, all right. Okay, all right. Okay, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, here's my gavel. Okay, meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-six.